So for those of you that don't know, we had a ceremony on Saturday to christen the new fire engine. We had Barbara Chalata in attendance and we had a really good crowd, great, great set of demonstrations demonstrating the new engine, demonstrating our fire department capability. I thought it was very well done. Fire Department did an outstanding job of planning that event. City staff once again was out in force on a Saturday, making sure that, you know, the attendees had all the information they needed, well-run. I know we had some Fire Department merch, so if you're interested in La Habra Heights Fire Department merch, I think we still have some available for sale, but that went, that was very popular, I heard, along with refreshments and some, some fun activities for the kids. So thank you to staff. Chief, I do want to give this to you. This is from Janice Hahn congratulating you on the, on the new engine and our celebration dedicating the engine. So maybe we can find a place for that on the, on the wall in the station there for the guys to see. So.
Absolutely.
For those of you that don't know, Chief Martin was very instrumental in getting that, A pivoting very quickly when we decided we needed to move towards getting a new fire engine, specking the engine out, making sure we got it here, dealing with all the administrative and logistical needs that come with getting a new engine and getting it here for what I'll call the prime fire season that starts, well, it's always fire season, but the, the Santa Ana start usually start in October, November. So congratulations, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does any of the council have any other proclamations or discussion on this point? All right. Let's go with public comments. So the first card I have is from Stephen Blagden.
That's Stephen Blagden, Citron Road. Talking about the roads, last month you awarded a contract for a named double road project. It was done to see if combining projects reduce costs. There did appear to be significant savings in some areas. So the last three projects, which will complete the rest of the roads of the city, should be done together. You need to start now doing that and stop planning for doing the 2526 project as just one project. We need to stretch every dollar to complete AD-7 as promised to the resident taxpayers. Failure to do so could cause rejection of a future assessment district. Then, Fire Department funding. I was going through papers, cleaning things up, and I came across a newsletter we sent out in 2010. The cover story was exclusive investigation, council's creative accounting bankrupts the fire fund to justify tax increase. What happened was the council decided to take revenue, the fire department earned from strike teams, oil well inspections, plan checks, et cetera, away from the fire department and put it in the general fund. When the city gave the money back to the fire department, it was called a subsidy. Between 1995 and 2009, the fire department ran surpluses every year but two. It's on that graph here. I'll pass this around. They were on track for another in 2010 until the accounting change. At the time, we thought this accounting change was somewhat dishonest, even the flim-flam, to trick residents. I haven't had a chance yet to review the city budgets to see if the practice has continued. Why does this matter? If the fire department is seen as always needing more money, one set of solutions is looked at. If the fire department is seen as a potential revenue generator, then finding new ways to generate revenue would be looked at. So that's, you can pass it around.
Stephen, we are so fortunate to have you as our city historian. I seem to recall that happening, but I mean, yeah, no, fantastic. Thank you. Are you, you had a few other items on here? Is that, you're good? Okay. All right. Ling?
That's for item 16.
Okay, you want to wait? All right. Okay, so all the rest are for item 16, so I'll hold those. And then Stephen, you're also talking on 16, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other public comments that didn't make it in the card? Anyone else wish to say anything before I move on? Committee comments? Any, okay. City Council comments? Anyone on the council have anything they'd like to say? Right. Let's move into administrative reports. Let me ask this. I know there's a lot of people here for item 16. Do we, do we want to pull item 16 up or make people go through all the administrative stuff?
It's up to the council and the mayor.
You guys good with that? Okay. All right. So let's go ahead then. I'll, I'll jump, I'll jump to item 16 since there's quite a few people here on item 16. Not that our administrative stuff isn't thrilling, but I can see people wanting to get them. So, tree replacement plan for new residents located at 7030 Canola Road. Rafferty?
Thank you, council members and mayor. The item before you tonight is a tree replacement plan for a new residence located at 1730 Canola Road. In May of 2024, the city council approved a standards modification for the construction of a new single-family residence located at 1730 Canola Road. As part of that approved plans for that project, there were certain existing trees on the landscaping plan for that project that were to remain as part of the project and continue in perpetuity. In the beginning stages of the work at the property, so the applicant has a grading plan and a grading permit at the moment, they started to do tree removal. They ended up removing trees that are shown on the plans to remain in sight. So trees that were not supposed to be removed were removed from the property. So as part of that, we were notified, we issued a stop work order to the applicants, that they stop working at the site, no more work until there is a resolution of the trees that were supposed to be remain on site or were removed. As part of that, staff has been working with the applicant to find replacements for the trees that they have on the property that were removed, that were supposed to remain on site. As that, so before you tonight is a plan, and we all have a large set of the plans there with you, that shows the landscaping plans as proposed by the applicant for the restoration of the removed trees. So as part of the project, there were three trees along the southeast corner, I call that the southeast corner of the property, they were supposed to remain, along with trees along the east side of the property line and the west side of the property that were supposed to remain as part of the original project to, to it. So nine trees in total. Three trees that were to remain at the southeast corner were removed. One of the trees along the east side property lot were removed that were slated to be remain on the site, the property. So as part of that, the applicant has gone back and worked to try to find a solution to replace those trees. Since the city council was the last approving body for this project, previously had been reviewed by the planning commission. There was appeal that went to council, council reviewed, commented, and sent it back to the planning commission, planning commission reviewed and approved, and the council had called for review, and ultimately were the ones that were the approving body for the project. So the applicant is proposing to add additional trees, a few at a larger box size, so stepping up to a 60-inch box on some of the trees to provide additional screening. Most of their new proposed trees are along the, the south end of the property, so southwest and southeast corners of the property lines, along with the east side property lines is where they are proposing to add additional trees in that area, somewhat a larger size to be able to meet those requirements. Our code does have a tree replacement code section to it, which is listed in the staff report. There is not a direct replacement requirement. Some cities have a three trees for every one tree removed, or five trees for every one tree removed. Ours is more just states that the requirements for tree replacement, which states that tree replacement shall consist of trees of sufficient number and size so that the neighborhood character views and privacy are restored or enhanced. So there's not a, a direct number of trees that may need to be replaced. The applicant has revised the plans. They feel that the trees that they have chosen, the location of those trees, the size of those trees, can meet those standards for providing the additional screening that is needed and privacy that can be shown onto between the new property and the neighboring property to the, to the south and to the, to the east of the property with those additional trees and the locations of those trees. They are here to seek approval from the city council on the tree replacement plan so they can get back to work. Property is still currently under a stop work order, so they have not been able to move forward with any work on the property until the trees are resolved. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. The applicants are here as well. They have their landscape architect. The owners and architect are here. We'll answer any questions you may have.
Do we want to open it up to public comment first, or do we have questions for the, for staff? Good with that? Okay. All right. So going back to the order I got the cards, Stephen Blagden?
Stephen Blagden, Citron Road, speaking on my own behalf. The applicant violated the crystal-clear conditions and approved plans. The crabs had their privacy stolen and are laid bare and exposed to all. If I steal your wallet containing $200 cash and I give you back 20, you haven't been made whole. What are the potential remedies? The code at 8748 says that during this hearing, you may revoke their permits and have them submit new plans for approval. If you look at the grading already done, the lot is fairly level and could be developed as such. There does not appear to be a need for the massive retaining walls and 1,500 yards of imported fill propping up the house that was shown in the original plans. If you choose to be more lenient and let them replace trees, the code says, as Rafferty said, the tree replacement shall consist of trees of sufficient number and size so that privacy is restored or enhanced. If you look at the proposed tree replacement plan tonight, we don't know how tall or wide those trees, those trees will be. There are also clear gaps between the trees that need to be filled in by an adjacent staggered row of mature bushes and might yet need another row behind that. Rather than just approve or modify the plan, I also recommend you add a performance standard using the language of the code, 71250D2. The tree replacement shall consist of trees and bushes of sufficient number and size so that the crab's house is fully screened and their privacy is restored or enhanced. The language should say that the vegetation shall be maintained into the future. This document should include a brief history of how and why it came about, the tree removal, contraries to stated conditions of approvals and approved plans, loss of privacy and screening, and the action necessary to restore it. You should require, would require this document to be recorded on the property. Since the city is not likely to be monitoring this in the future, there should also be language similar to, quote, "If privacy and screening are diminished due to neglect, lack of water, removal, or excess pruning, the owner of 1730 shall restore the vegetation with the same performance standard used for the original restoration within 90 days of notification by owners or occupants of 1715 Canola Road. If the restoration is not complete after 90 days, the owners of 1750 Canola may file for legal relief to enforce the conditions of the maintenance requirement. The owners of 1730 Canola shall reimburse the owners of 1750 for all expenses, legal costs, and attorney's fees within 60 days of a bill submitted to them by the 1750 owners. If not paid within 60 days, a lien against the property may be filed by the owners of 1750 Canola." So the important things are making, having there be a performance standard on the approval because we don't know what it's going to look like with those trees. So if they put in whatever they put in and you can't see the crab's house and they have their privacy, everything's good. If you look at it and you can see the crab's house and their privacy isn't restored, they have to keep moving forward, not to have a fight of, well, was it done? You have to come back with different plans. So give them performance standard. Then it's important to have the recording of the document so it's there for all to see in the future, the maintenance requirement, and I think the indemnification of the 1750 owners in the future if they have to initiate legal action. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. Lane? Lane Broullard.
Thank you. Lane Broullard, Reposado Drive. And honest to God, I, I always told myself, you know, once you've been on planning commission or council, you don't come and testify. You know, you've had your time. But I found this one to be important, and I never thought I would say this.
Stephen, I agree with you 100%.
This is a first. So I think this shows the overarching understanding of our general plan, of the codes, of the bill, all this stuff. And I'm looking at this. I'm looking at your, your agenda report, and it says, okay, existing trees were to remain. They didn't. It did screen, I've known the crabs for years, and I've, when I went to their house, I drive down there, they have like a flag lot, and the whole west side, you couldn't see the property. When you're looking at it from the south side, you couldn't see the property because it was so screened by vegetation. It's gone now. I went there yesterday, and when I look at this, I say, oh, I got a plan here on page four, and it says, existing trees accidentally removed. I've never accidentally removed trees with a chainsaw. That usually involves intent. So I'm looking at that going, oh, that's the first thing that's wrong. Then I'm going through the agenda report, which I think Rafferty did a great job on this. It's like, okay, screening, you know, to remain to provide screening. And it says, during the beginning of construction at site, four trees were to remain in place. I think there were more than four when I looked there over the fence. I didn't trespass. And you issued the stop work. But what I liked the most is, is that the code relies on restoring or enhancing views or privacy. And I looked at those trees, and I go, those trees were tall. I don't know what the height was. But when I look on page four of your plan, it says, or is it five? It's five, I think. And the, the trees on the south side, they say they're going to be a Wilson, you know, fruitless olive tree. So I go online and I go, AI, you know, which has taken over the world. And I, yes. Oh, I thought you said that. And it goes, okay, what is the height and width of a Wilson tree? And they're pretty accurate. They're, you know, 20 feet high, maybe 50 feet wide. But, you know, I think the trees there that I recollect were maybe double that size. And so I'll go back to the beginning of this and I go, oh, okay, well, the city says the code relies on restoring or enhancing. Well, I don't think a 60-inch box tree, which is probably not even at maturity yet, you know, at 20 feet, it may be 10 or whatever, that's not restoring, that's not enhancing. You know, there needs to be something done, and it has to be done as a condition precedent to any grading or development, in my opinion. You know, because if these were existing trees, you can't say, oh, the grading or the development, it would impact them. No, they're existing. So I think a condition precedent of any development needs to be the restoration according to the code, which Rafferty talked about, restoring and enhancing views and privacy. And until that's done, I, if I, and again, going back to, and I hate, you said 2010. I was here in 2010, so I guess I'm guilty of the fire thing. But, but when I was on council, I wouldn't approve this. So, and I hope you don't do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Lane. James Crabbe.
Can we go last after the applicant?
I don't have, I don't have any cards from the applicant. So I, I, is the applicant not speaking?
[coughs]
Yeah, then I, can you, can you, can we get a card then if you want to? But James, you and your wife are going to speak, so maybe you can come up, and then your wife can come up, or if you guys want to, however you guys want to do it.
We can still address whatever the comments are?
No, this is public hearing. We don't go back and forth. Sorry.
But if James speaks first and then the Lanes might go back, so I can speak to anything new they might have.
I, I mean, just, I mean, we've got your material. I would just talk and go over your material. Make sure you tell us what you want to hear. I think the facts are pretty clear. So.
All right. I'll, I'll be brief. I'm just going to go off my notes. Are you going to do this slide? She'll do the presentation thing. Good evening.
Just, just, you know, we are, we are trying to keep these to five minutes, so.
I'm, I'm trying. Don't start that. I'm, I'm trying. I'm, I'm going to be brief.
Okay.
I'm getting whatever time left. I'm giving it to my wife.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Do you want to show something?
No, no, I'm going to go, she's going to take care of the presentation.
She's going to do that, okay.
Because she's great at that.
Got it.
Okay, so, start, stop. Anyway, as you know, we're here to reject this plan. Again, 10 to 12 tree, mature trees were taken out. There were no significant trees identified on these plans. In 2023, they took out a tree that probably was 30, 40 inches wide. We brought it up to planning when, before anything was approved, we got ignored, they got ignored, nothing happened. So what happens? I'm, 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 I'm trying to be quick. So as, no penalties, nothing happens, so now they take out all the trees. Okay. We go down on September 16th to look at the first set of plans, or one of the plans. It says they were going to, they removed one tree in error during grading, complete fabrication. The next plan is dated 10/28. They say four trees removed, six were added. However, there's 25 trees on that first plan. There's 26 now. Six were not added. So, city council said to relocate these trees off our property line, so there's no more trespass of their trees. They did that. It's in the, it's online. Now they're back trespassing on our property, the trees. We don't want to maintain their trees. It's, it's not for us. It's just ongoing pattern of misleading documentation. At one point, they had their water shut off by, and as per the request of the owner by the water, water department, and it was locked. What they did with the trees, they moved them all around. So, yeah, okay, they're not clustered, but they moved them all around. They didn't add a significant number of trees. Oh, they added the silk tree, which is a highly flammable tree. It'll grow 40 feet tall and 50 feet wide if not pruned properly. We don't need trees that are highly flammable. What we want, we want our privacy back. We want our screening restored, as other people have said, per the code. It'd be great to do three for one. That would be awesome. And, and make sure nothing's done before you issue a building permit. And if, you know what? If you got to, yeah, shrink something, lose half a driveway, whatever, to get the trees to fit, so be it. But this was not an accident. Thank you.
Thanks, James. All right. Do we have any other cards? No? Okay.
for your time this evening. I hope that you've had a chance to review the packet. I know that we've given you a lot of information in a short amount of time to absorb, oop, okay. Can I get my phone or something?
Let's stop the timer while we get this figured out.
Okay. Sorry. Let's see. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'll just quickly highlight what's represented on each slide. And this is page one, just the title page. You can skip to the next page. Oh, sorry. Okay. Why we're here. Applicants intentionally destroyed 10 trees, knowing full well what the restrictions were. They have a long history of neglect with trees, we debatement, pool, aka swamp, and non-compliance, illegal fence, and so forth, with no repercussions and without taking any responsibility, always someone else's fault. Please protect the citizens of La Habra Heights. Make them restore our privacy and our trees, all 10 of them, same size, diameter, height, et cetera. Next. Sadly, after at least two visits to the property, the agenda report is inaccurate. There were 10 trees destroyed, not four. Next. Four and five. Pictures illustrate illegal fence, neglect of landscaping, and pool, aka swamp, et cetera, complete disregard for community safety, potential threat to firemen, neighbors, et cetera. Trees along property line provided substantial privacy for us. Is that five or six? Okay. And then seven, please, for the next one. Yeah, no, sorry, back one. That one, yeah. Picula Straits trees being destroyed without removal permit and well before any permits were issued for this project. Next. Diagram of the many, many stumps and suckers that they are passing off as trees. Next, please. Some pics of the many, many stumps, stumps that are hidden behind the tarp, sucker shooting out of stumps, and rampant tumbleweeds. Next. Trees were removed with malicious intent, with chainsaw, not grading equipment as fabricated on the landscape plans. No viable trees remain on the east slash southeast side of the property. I hope you had a chance to watch the video. If not, I understand that we may, you might play it later, I guess. Wait, was that, okay. Next slide is, pics illustrate six trees on the south, southeast section of the property, not three. Trees are eugenia's, not pittusporum's as identified on the landscape plans. Trees were intentionally misrepresented, intentionally destroyed. Privacy is now negatively impacted. Next, please. A pics of two different invoices from two different tree climbers over the years showing that the trees are in fact eugenia's, not pittusporum's, identified on the landscape plans, and two examples of the many times that we've paid to maintain the trees over the years. Next, please. Pictures illustrate privacy has been negatively impacted, can now see into bedrooms and common rooms. Next, please. Pictures illustrate that there is no sign of existing protected tree that was to remain in the northwest corner of the property either, as shown on landscape planned. Next, please. Pictures show that not only one tree was destroyed along the east property line, but there are no viable trees left remaining on the east southeast side of the property. Next, please. Trees trespassing over our property line, once again. They have not added six additional trees to the plan as they would like you to believe. 25, 25 trees on the approved plan, 26 trees on the current plan. Plans call for nine existing trees to remain, not true. Should have stayed 12 mature trees. Remove ADU and/or reduce the size of the home to allow room to restore these trees in adequate locations. Hold them to what they stated they would accomplish on these landscape plans. Next, please. Google search of silk trees. Please prohibit silk trees. The locations are too close to the road, property line, power lines, our driveway, our only means of ingress and egress. Trees are susceptible to breaking and causing damage. Highly invasive. In reality, these trees can reach 40 feet, 40 feet high by 50 feet wide, not the 25 by 25 stated on the plan. They are wider than tall, not likely to be well-maintained. If, if allowed, they should be set back 25 feet from the property line, power lines, road, and so forth. They're hazardous. Next, please. Google search of magnolia grandiflora trees. In reality, they can reach 80 feet tall by 50 feet wide, not 25 by 25 on the plan. Not appropriate species for alongside the road, also not likely to be well-maintained. If allowed, they should be planted 40 feet back from the road so as not to trespass. Next, please. Oh, sorry. Strawberry trees and olive trees. Please plant 15 to 20 feet off the property line if they end up being approved so as not to trespass. Strawberry trees and olive trees. Please plant fifteen to twenty feet off the property line if they end up being approved so as not to trespass. Sixty-inch box trees need to be planted before building and planting, building, because the planting sites will not be accessible otherwise. Let's see, solutions. Do I have existing time from him as well, or no?
That's fine.
Okay. Possible solutions, revoke, revoke the PUC. They were given everything that they asked for. They have yet to acknowledge full extent of what they did. They continue to be deceptive and show no respect for the city. This has been an eight-year-long negotiations with the city. We were made aware of it four years into the process, and this has been a total nightmare. They chose to destroy the street, the trees, hold them accountable for the actions. Suckers and saplings are not viable. Protect the citizens of La Habra Heights, restore our privacy in the trees, all ten of them. Trees of the same size, diameter, and height of appropriate species, prohibit the silk trees, need to be replaced immediately. Water runoff is even more likely now. No trees roots to absorb water flow headed for our property. Set back away from the property lines and power lines by at least half of the crown size of maturity. No reason to believe that they will properly maintain these trees, proven to be neglect negligent and untrustworthy. Planting needs to take place before any building occurs, so the equipment needed for installation has access. Water needs to be restored to the property in order to protect, to protect what few trees do remain, meter removed some time ago. Remove ADU and/or reduce size of home to accommodate new locations of trees so as not to trespass. On advice of legal counsel, we will hold them liable. Trees close to water retention basin will be an added concern. Impose thirty-year bond to ensure long-term care and survival of newly planted trees. Dead or neglected trees to be treated as removed trees and in violation. All of this can and should be done. Hotels and commercial structures work with sixty-inch box trees and upward on a regular basis. Applicant asked for and received every modification. Applicant representatives showed negligence and dishonesty. With no consequences, what is likelihood of them complying with the rest of the conditions? Judging by their track record, not very. Protect the citizens of La Habra Heights, set a precedent, uphold integrity to build responsibly and in accordance with our laws. I'm sorry, I'm getting upset. This has just been such a long nightmare. Demonstrate that willful violations will not be tolerated. Hold them accountable. Don't allow them to destroy trees, disrespect land, law, and community. With impunity, what message would this send future developers? Can you play the video? Okay, can you shut that off, sorry? Can you turn the sound on too, please? That doesn't look like grading to me. Thank you.
Okay, next card I have is from Carl Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Carl Garcia. I'm the landscape architect and representative for Bob and Joyce Ling, who are also here with us tonight. I did prepare those plans that you have in front of you, and I've been involved in this project since its inception. I wasn't originally gonna speak here at this moment, because I figured I'd be called up by you at some point tonight. But I was asked by my client to come here and say a few words. And really, I don't feel that I need to go point by point and argue or try to refute what's been presented to us by the Crabs. I will agree with them on one point, though. This has been a very long and arduous process for everyone involved. I myself began in 2017 on this project, and it's evolved, gone through various iterations, gone through multiple planning commission reviews and changes, bringing us to where we are today. If you'll remember, we actually were here last year where the planning commission kicked it up to the council on the Crabs' advice, recommendation. You reviewed it, sent it back to the planning commission for their final word, excuse me, and they reviewed it and approved it. So with that approval, the planting palette that you have in front of you has not changed. That planting palette was actually extensively reviewed, modified, and come to where it's at by the commission. Every single plant material you see on that legend is actually on the approved list of plant materials by the fire department. So if anyone has an issue with those plants, you're gonna have to look at your own approved plant list. In addition to that, some of the points that were brought up by this presentation are distracting from the actual issue that we're here to discuss tonight, which is the property line between the Crabs and the Lings, the southeast property line. The trees that were brought up previously were actually along Canola Road. Those trees have a thirty-five to forty-five foot setback from the actual edge of pavement that's existing right now. So again, I don't know how that applies to what we're talking about tonight. Furthermore, their statement that the plants that were removed along the southern portion were eugenia's would actually help our case, because in fact, the fire department asked us to eliminate all shrubs, and a eugenia is actually a shrub, a large shrub. So that doesn't necessarily help their case, however, we're trying to do what we can to maintain that screening effect. We understand where they're coming from. I understand where they're coming from as landscape architect. So what we're trying to do is to come to an equitable and fair compromise. Now, the plans do state that those trees were removed in error, and that is in fact the case, because my client Bob does not pick up a chainsaw and actually cut down his trees. He hires a contractor, the contractor has staff, they go out and do their job. We found out after the fact that one tree at the, at that time, we thought it was one tree that had been cut down. Turns out that three trees, those eugenia's along the southern property line, were also taken out in error. Be that as it may, we are here today to remedy that situation. And what we've done by the plans that you have in front of you is our effort to actually come to that fair, equitable, and as the city's code says, create the screen that is enhancing or improving the previous condition. Excuse me. So by incorporating large sixty-inch box trees, which are also very expensive, they have to begin brought in by a crane, it is a long and difficult process to get those large trees, we're trying to do our part to remedy that situation. The fact that the species we chose is actually a species that is easy to maintain, it looks good all year round. It works with the fire code. It basically checks all the necessary boxes that we need to check to make sure that you here at the council can actually look at this and say, we've done our diligence. So with that, we are also adding an additional six trees to replace, in addition to those four trees, for a total of ten new trees. Those additional six trees are twenty-four inch box trees, which again, is a large-sized tree. It is manageable, but it's also gonna give us that impact. And all that happens along that southeast property line between the Lings and the Crabs. In addition, somebody mentioned there's gaps between the trees. Well, again, we have a fire code that we have to comply with. And that code states that we need to maintain ten feet clear between each tree canopy at maturity. And that's what you're seeing with those gaps. I didn't write the code. That's by the state of California and what's adopted here by the city. If you have any questions, I'm also here. Thank you very much for your time.
Robert Ling.
Good evening, ladies, gentlemen. If you look at the, the plant, where the trees are supposed to remain, they all are there. They are remaining there, except four trees. I did order to cut the tree on the east side, the one that you saw being cut down, because that tree was sitting right in the middle of the property line between us and the Crabs. And it was uprooting the fence, so I thought I'd remove that tree to repair the fence. And also years ago, the Crabs, Mr. James Crabbe, did complain to me about that tree affecting, affecting the power line and so forth. So I thought he would be happy that if I removed that tree. I enjoyed the twenty-seven on Friday. I was actually there, oh, June, I'm sorry. June twenty-seven on Friday, I was actually there until ten o'clock watching the grading people to do, to do their job. And at one-thirty on that same day, my wife returned to pay those guys, and she actually took a lot of the videos. And those three trees, they were sitting, what?
The three trees were still there on my videos.
The, the three trees that were supposedly supposed to stay, but it was taken out, were still there. That was on Friday. And subsequently, on Sunday morning, I got a call from Mr. Rafferty here saying that a, a stop order was issued, so I had to stop. And, and actually, all this time, I thought there was only one tree that was, that was cut, until Carl, the landscape architect, told me, no, actually, three trees in the southeast is gone, so I panicked. So we went there and verified, sure enough, it was, it was gone. And.
But we ended up also with Rafferty.
Yeah. Now, these three trees are.
Pay attention to the number of trees that was cut, because we were told that there's only one tree that was cut by mistake. So we want to see it ourselves, so we, together with Rafferty and Carl, went over there to take a look. And we didn't notice about the three trees at all at that time. But on June twenty-seven, I stayed there under about three PM, and the guys were cleaning up with the tractors and everything. The three trees were still there. It's on my video. So this is a puzzle to us too. How and when did that three trees, I mean, when were they removed? So that was not ordered to be removed. We called the tree cutter, we talked to Carlos, we video faced with time with him on that day when Carl was there with us too. And he said, no, I didn't cut those three trees, and you didn't pay me for it. We only paid less than two thousand dollars to clean up and fifteen hundred or whatever it was. So he said, you didn't pay me for those three trees.
And there, there is really no benefits, benefit for us to cut those three trees, because they are way at the bottom of the, at the slope. And why would I spend four thousand dollars to do something needlessly? So anyway.
So up to this point, it's still a puzzle to us. Who ordered to cut those three trees? And we didn't understand that. So I think there's a conspiracy theory behind, behind all this. I don't want to say this, but I guess one of the neighbors across the street approached me a couple of times saying, hey, can you cut those three trees? Because it's blocking my view. I'll pay for it, because I own equipment and stuff like that. I can do it for you. But I said, no, 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 this is not what we want, we want to do. We have to go by the plan. So we did not order to cut those trees, and the tree cutter also told us that, no, you didn't pay me for those three trees. Why would I cut it for you? We talked to Carlos with a FaceTime, and we show you. And that was early July, I believe, when we talked to him, when we came back there with Carl, Carl, the architect, our architect. So, but that's besides the point. Now the damage is done, and we are very sorry too that we had to go through all this. But I think the situation is, we really, want your understanding. We started this project way in 2016, when we talked to the architect. So it has been nine years that we have been dreaming to have a house, you know, just a decent house for us to live in. We love La Habra Heights. Why can't we have the right to live there, the way we dream about, you know, having our home built over there? Nine years is a long time for us. We are getting older. We are not getting any younger. So we hope we can remedy the situation by replacing those trees with something that is reasonable. And we also want privacy from the Crabs. It's not just him that wants privacy from us. We want to have the same thing. So what's wrong with replacing it with the plan that we already have? It's, the damage has, has been done, and it's not our intent to do that. And we still don't know who actually ordered to cut those trees and who paid for it. The tree cutter swear that he didn't do it. The guy that we talked to, the supervisor. And it wasn't done with intent like the way Mr. and Mrs. Crabbe told you guys, I mean, told us. Of course, we are not malicious to bring all this, you know, this accusation here is ridiculous. This is not right. And this is more like a personal attack to me. They have been doing this for the, for the last few years. Because I can't remember that we are not good landlord. We need to buy a plant for, for the landscape. I think those are all ridiculous accusations. We are decent.
I believe you have passed your time.
Okay, I think, I think time is up.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. All right, council, any questions?
I, I don't have any questions. If anyone, I'd like to move to comments when we're ready.
Have any questions for either the Crabs or the Lings?
Probably for staff, but.
For staff, okay. Anyone, Crabs or Lings? Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
I have the plan in front of me here. How much different is this than the previous plan?
From the approved.
The one we approved before.
The trees along the, your, the south end, along the crab side of it are different than what it was before. That's the biggest change there is, those trees have been reordered in a different order and of a larger size. There was less trees at the south end of the property previously. So the trees before sort of hugged around the ADU on the south end, and you had your three original trees in the very corner of the property that were there previously, and the ones above. And there was a couple, two additional trees along the side of the, the house.
And I guess the other question I had, maybe it's for the landscape architect, is.
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I under, I understand the larger trees, and I understand the, you're putting in the olive trees and things. You heard the concern about the gaps and things between the trees. What can be done with that?
Not much, unfortunately, because we do have that fire code. So the only thing we could do is plant shrubs that do not exceed two feet in height at the understory of trees, which isn't gonna do anything to mitigate the situation. So unfortunately, our hands are tied when it comes to the fire code.
So there's no way, because I, I looked at the property during this event, and there was complete screening provided by the trees that were there. So what you're saying is that because those trees were destroyed, our, our own fire code now prevents you from putting it back to the way it was, the way it was and the way we approved it.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. It also prevents us from going higher density with the trees as well, because what you see there is as high density that we can have based on the current fire code.
The chief, have we looked at the current CAL FIRE codes based off of tree species? Cause I, I did the same Google search, and it does look like those silk trees are not the most preferable for fire reasons? So have we looked at what CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE's recent list and?
Sure, there's more legislation coming out in 2026 that's gonna counteract a lot of the things that we're discussing today here. So inevitably, the fire code allows for the trees that they're chosen, but the shrubs that they're talking about is not gonna be in compliance with the fire code. So I think that's why they're eliminating that. The tree that they choose must be compliant. So the tree that they've chosen is one of the compliant trees.
Correct.
So what, what we're, what we're hearing is there's no way for you to restore the privacy that was there before these trees were cut down?
Well, I cannot add additional plant material to restore that privacy. So what we did is add larger plant material, which is allowable per the code.
Well, I guess my question is, so there was pretty much a hundred percent screening on that east side of the property?
Not exactly, because we were directed to remove a lot of those shrubs that were overgrown. So at the end of the day, the trees that you see on the plan with that asterisk looking symbol, those were the. So at the end of the day, the trees that you see on the plan with that asterisk looking symbol, those were the trees that were intended to remain.
If I might. You talked about equity. There's a doctrine in the law, and it's old as God's night shirt. If you want to do equity, you have to get equity, you have to do equity. There's nothing about this that's equitable. You went in and stripped out trees that should have never been removed. You violated the conditional use permit. You can't say that we did it, or the contractors did it. It's not our fault. It is the applicant who is responsible to carry out the terms of the conditional use permit. I would assume it was the landscape architect's duty to make sure that happened as well. It certainly didn't happen. There's nothing reasonable about saying that the fire codes somehow required you to violate the conditional use permit. That's ludicrous. Everything about it is superfluous. There's nothing that's being asked today by the crabs that shouldn't have been given with the CPU being granted. But instead, you know, this city does not tolerate people violating their rules. It's not right. You can't have a permit and say, oh, I'm going to remove a tree just because I want to remove a tree without a permit. That's nonsense. And please don't make us... Don't think we're idiots here. We absolutely know what this city requires, and what your clients have done is in absolute violation of that. I don't need to ask you any questions. In my judgment, this matter should go back to the city, to the planning commission with instructions from the city council that basically asks them to do what the crabs are asking to do. Restore the trees that are there, give the proper clearance from the property line, and make sure they're irrigated and do it before you do any building. The mature trees have to be in there before you do any building. You can do it at the time of fine grading?
That was actually already part of the conditions.
Well, yeah, but you've got to do it. And you have to irrigate it, and the irrigation has to be in there. But we'll let the planning commission decide... From my perspective, we'll let the planning commission decide that. But there's no equity on your side. You can't ask for equity because you haven't given equity.
All of this that happened is during the clearing and grubbing phase before actual grading operations occurred. So what you're seeing out on the site right now is basically the process of cleaning up that site before grading operations occurred. So you cannot sit here and say that they're in violation of not installing the trees because they were in the process before the stop order was put in place. Now, I can verify that I was in contact with the lings as things progressed, but I'm not on site. I'm not being paid to be on site 24 hours a day. And so I have no oversight for what the contractor does. Now, I was called after the fact, and I did what I can after the fact. And that's why I'm here today.
After the fact doesn't help, does it?
No, of course not. But what can we do?
Someone has to manage the contractor.
What can you do if this mistake has happened? I don't know your extent of involvement with contractors or construction. However, mistakes are made in the field all the time. We just try to remedy them in a way that is timely and effective to everybody.
But at the end of the day, the obligation is the applicant to manage the people that do their work.
Sure, but accidents do happen.
So this isn't... I don't know that this is productive right now, so let's pause for just a minute. Are there any... Sorry, Greg. Are there any other questions for the...
I'm not that familiar with landscape... Okay, so now, when we look at the pictures, there's the crab driveway, and it's pretty clear. There's nothing there. Okay, so you're going to put in the silt trees?
No. Silt trees are not along that property line. If you look at the plans, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'm...
Yeah, that's why I say it's confusing, because they're bringing up other trees that are not part of this issue. I just like to stick to this topic, which is the southeast property line.
Okay, so what is it on the southeast property? What type of tree? That's just the olive tree?
The olive tree is the large 60-inch box tree. And give me a moment while I bring up the plan here.
Okay.
I've got that copied. Thanks, sir.
But I don't know, olive trees...
So we have... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Olive trees kind of don't have much down by the ground. They're... They have a trunk, and then they go up. So how do you get...
There's a fence between the two properties, and it's a solid fence.
And that's the...
So up to six feet is a solid fence. So the canopies essentially are above the six-foot fence.
So they're going to keep that fence? That fence is pretty old. Is that the plan?
We were asked not to touch anything along that property line, so I... Ken, do you know, is that a new fence that's going, a new wall?
I have a fence that's why I took out the tree because it was... It was a rain that didn't even come around, and I'm bringing the fence. But I would love it for the block wall, I think it'd be better.
There you have it, ma'am. It's just unfortunately, it's been this point of contention between the two neighbors. And so a lot is... It's difficult to get anything accomplished, so... To answer your previous question, the other tree, the 24-inch box tree, is actually an arbutus tree, a strawberry tree.
And is that full down to the ground, or is that...
No, no trees are essentially full down to the ground. That's considered more of a shrub. And again, what we're trying to do is create a canopy above the fence to create that visual screen into the property. The idea is to help with screening and blocking some of the views of the new residents that's going to be constructed from the neighbors. So anything low down at the bottom isn't going to accomplish that. We really want something up above on the canopy level to help screen views into their residence.
Okay. And how long is it going to take those trees to get to that height?
Well, the 60-inch box trees already have a head start by a few years. But we always look at the size on the plans, for example, at maturity, which is typically five years.
Okay, so the crabs will see... Won't have privacy for four or five years? Is that the...
No, the trees are going to be there. It's just not going to be a full, thick screen. And unfortunately, even in perpetuity, we need to maintain the property per the fire code, which requires us to keep 10 feet in between each tree canopy. There's no way around that. So regardless of how large these trees get, 10 feet will have to be maintained between each canopy.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions. It's a waste of time.
No, if the... I don't know if Mr. Martin can chime in or not, but as far as...
Chief Martin?
Chief Martin, yeah. Do you know of any means of anything to fill in the gaps and things, even on an interim basis on that? Or is it that all that stuff has to be, stay clear for fire code?
Right. I think what has happened here is we cannot undo what has been done. So I think these people have to work together to try to make this compliant because we have new codes that are coming next year that are going to even make it more... I don't want to say convoluted, but it's going to be more restrictive. But I think if they can come together and work something out, there's no tree that can provide immediate shading right now. So they're going to have to have that growing process and the shrubs or whatever it was that they had for the... The code is specific. 10 feet provides defensible space. Even with the canopy, you've got to be careful that you are regulating that so that the property is compliant within the codes that are not only in existence, the AB 40 and all, the newer, some of the newer codes. There's more coming. But I would say whatever they can do right now to try to put back the way things were, I don't know if they're ever going to be able to come to that. And there's not a tree or shrub that they can do that, that can do what has been done already, undo what has been done.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry, are you done?
I have one question for Rafferty, I guess. Do you know what typically our code allows for, you know, the fences, you know, the see-through fences and that? And do you know what's been approved for this project? Is it the same thing that goes with our standard ordinances?
So for this project, it would follow our requirements. In the location at the rear of the property, they'd be allowed to have a six-foot tall fence along the canola, along the street edge. You know, 42 inches maximum solid and open wrought iron above that.
So this would be on the side, this would be allowed to have a six-foot fence?
Because it's technically their rear property line, it could be a six-foot solid fence.
And also along that roadway?
Starting 35 feet back from the front. So that first 35-foot strip of the front property is, you know, technically our front yard area. So everything within there would have to meet those requirements of our fencing, which is a maximum of 42 inches solid, an open wrought iron to a maximum of six feet. So up close to the edge, it would have to be that. Past that, it could be solid. Solid block wall, wood, vinyl.
But the first 35 feet would be open, then?
That mixture, a maximum of 42 inches solid, and it can be 90% open wrought iron above that for the first 35 feet.
Otherwise, we could modify that if we wanted to at council level for that, just that short portion of the screen that more?
Yeah. I would recommend to make sure that they can meet vehicle clearance-like view aspects of it along the front. Because we do allow that fencing to go as close as six feet to the street. So that fencing along the front doesn't necessarily have to be at that front property line. The front property line is a little bit from the edge of the pavement. We do allow people to build fencing up as close as six feet to the edge of the roadway. But we're just making sure there is a triangle box that the engineers like to see for vehicle clearance so you have visibility when you're coming in and out of driveways.
I just think that might help the situation on the... Because you can't do anything evidently with the plant material. Okay, that's all the questions I had.
If you got rid of the ADU... I'm asking either the chief or Rafferty. If you got rid of the ADU, is there a reason you couldn't plant trees 10... You have to have 10 feet between the trunks? Is that...
The canopies of the tree at maturity.
You're talking about like a staggered?
Yeah. Move, put a second row of trees back from the crabs border that would inter-space where these trees don't fill in. Is that doable? Or would that be legal is the question?
If I could speak, then Title 24 is very specific in that it has to do with that spacing and the drip line. So if they're adhering to the policies set forth in Title 24, then they're within that code.
So Rafferty, could they put a second row of trees back up closer to the proposed new residence, which would then protect the crabs?
So you can see, they already have an additional tree that is placed closer to like the ADU inside the property, which kind of runs into that aspect of like trying to build almost a triangle to it. It just gets hard to be able to do all of those things and keep it in there. If you don't have an ADU there, then obviously there is the ability to add trees along that edge and try to keep it canopy-wise away from the other trees and the residence itself.
Thank you.
I have one basic question. Why should the crabs pay for the mistakes done by the applicant or by their contractors? Why should they have to sacrifice at this point?
Is that a rhetorical question?
Yes, yes. Somebody has an answer, but the whole idea is that... We had a status modification, we had several, actually, but this particular status modification, it was in exchange for the applicant agreeing to do certain things and not do certain things. And the applicant violated. I, you know, quite frankly, I think if nothing else can be done, perhaps the applicant ought to submit a new plan that conforms to... I mean, this is getting practically ridiculous. Otherwise, why bother putting conditions on conditional use permits? Or excuse me, on conditions on status modifications if we're not going to enforce them? That's the basic question.
So, Carol?
I don't know, maybe I... I did hear the applicant say this has been a long process, 2017. I was on the planning commission like in 2020 or something. And part of the problems, as I understood it, was that the applicants, they have a dream home that just, in my opinion, at that point, I was told, didn't quite fit the heights. And they have, over those years, gradually, I guess, tried to modify their dream home. But it's not the city's fault, in my opinion, that this took so long. Thank you.
I guess I have one other question, too, just to make sure it's in there. Before the building permit is issued, I guess we had a condition in there that all of this, all these trees and everything gets in place before, is that right?
Correct. There's a condition in the approval for trees to be installed and irrigated.
Would that include the fence over there, too? Or did we talk about that?
At that time, we didn't talk about or condition anything related to fencing.
I guess that's another condition that I would want if we approve this tonight.
Chief Martin, just a quick question. So like the privet privacy hedges that you see advertised, like from Moon Valley Nursery, where they talk about, you know, they can bring in a 12- or 14-foot-high privet. Those are, per California code, not legal?
According to the policy, yes.
You can have them in groups of three. So you can have shrubs in groups of three. So like those privet hedges are that, sort of that. You could have groups of three, and then there's a minimum distance between groups of shrubs and/or other trees. There are lots.
I'm looking at what people have done on Hacienda, right? Brand-new wall gets built. The wall is per our code, but right behind the wall, they've planted those privets, and they're not in groups of three.
No, it's a solid wall.
Solid wall of privets. So that's not legal?
That does not meet the requirements of the highest severity fire zone. But they're also doing landscaping on their own. That is not part of a project or an approval. It's like that we are reactive. So if we have coenforcement complaint, we would go after them for those things.
Got it.
This, we are here looking at a field...
That's my confusion, right?
Yeah.
We can't do this. We can't put up a privacy hedge yet. I see them all up and down Hacienda.
Yeah, but as this project goes through the construction process...
So if I might, the... One of the issues is the ADU is pushed towards the crabs' property. To the extent that the ADU is closer to the crabs' property, if that creates a fire separation issue, that's the builder's problem, it's not the existing resident's problem. In other words...
So in other words, if we can't get enough trees in the plan because of the ADU, then it should be...
That's right, yeah. And I think the fire issue is red herring myself. But even if it weren't, the point is, the ADU is what creates the issue. It isn't the house itself. It's the ADU.
I don't know that we're in a position to go into this level of detail here at council. And I know we've talked a lot about this tonight. Carol?
I had a question for Todd when there's...
Yeah, so my... I mean, you kind of made the suggestion that we send this back to the planning commission. I think enough, I think there's enough questions about what, how do we create an equitable solution here? I don't know that we're the best entity to try to decide that when it comes to the number of options that are available and probably the amount of debate that needs to happen around what is equitable and what should we do as a city. You know, I clearly remember one of our big conditions as a council was that those trees remain. We were, you know, we gave the applicant just about every condition that they asked for with some minor modifications to get this done with... In my, you know, my recollection was that those trees, they just stood out as something that we looked at as being an important component of the approval. I don't think that tonight we can make a decision about what, and this is John's opinion as the mayor, what is equitable and what we should do. I think it needs to go back to the planning commission. I think they need to look at this holistically and figure out how do we replicate what was there? And, you know, and if it can't be replicated, what are the other solutions that are available? And how could those fit into both the fire code? Because obviously, I don't know enough about the fire code and how it pertains to new building. Nor does, I don't think, you know, there's a few of you that were on... Nor does, I don't think, you know, there's a few of you that were on the planning commission, maybe you recall it. But I do think that that's probably the wisest thing for us to do, is to put it back to the planning commission, have them look at it, and then they can.
I'm perfectly happy to move it back to the planning commission. I'd like to make a series of recommendations that the planning commission consider based upon this hearing. Lacking that, if the planning commission doesn't consider what we've heard today, then it just comes back here anyway.
Right.
So, the reality for me is that I would, I would, I would move to return the matter to the planning commission, requiring that they make certain that there is full tree coverage on the crabs' property line.
Can we say screening?
Yes.
Screening instead of tree, because there's other options, right, that can be used besides just trees? So, maybe we just say full screening that gets the privacy there prior to construction.
It's, it's, this is, it's clearly a privacy issue, it is an overhang issue, right?
Yep.
So, the second thing would be that the, the trees be set back twenty feet from the property line, simply because that keeps the umbrella of the tree, the top of the tree, from over, reaching over their line. That the water be restored to the property so that irrigation to the trees can be implemented. That the irrigation be put in place. That the, the trees that are implanted should attain reasonable growth, fifteen feet to twenty feet with canopy within five years, that they be evergreen. And there's already a condition for stormwater control that requires stormwater control on that, on that part of the property line. My recommendation to the planning commission is that all things be considered.
And what about, what about extension of the privacy fence?
Yes.
That's two, okay. That's allowable, I guess, right?
Yes.
Do I?
Well, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Well, based on the topography, I don't think a six-foot fence would protect the crabs, but I'm open to be disproved on that. But I do know, the fence that I saw the last time I was out there really looks, is pretty beat up. I would suggest that the attorney at the planning commission have, I was going to ask Todd, but maybe they would be prepared to explain how you could ensure that these trees and these privacy plantings would, would endure. I mean, the crabs have suggested a bond. Mr. Blackden had some kind of recorded missive that allowed the crabs or their subsequent owners to retain, to regain any attorney's fees they would incur in the future if these trees died. Is there some way to ensure the long-term viability of, of whatever privacy is in fact planted? I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or, and maybe it could come up at the planning commission.
Sure, well, the project, the city has the authority to mitigate impacts of the project, right? That's the basic premise. And in this case, the issue is the privacy, and it was intended to be done by the trees. How we ensure that that continues for the life of this project, which really, in this case, is for all practical purposes in perpetuity, there's different ways to do that. It's, you can A, just make it a condition, and if at any point in time it is not in compliance, that they make it compliant within X time period, or else the condition, the approval is potentially revoked. You could put a restriction on the property that mandates that the screening be continued. I would recommend that the city be the party that has enforcement authority. When you start deferring enforcement authority to third parties and give a third-party control over another private property, that raises various legal issues. So, it would be the city enforcing the recorded restriction. You could have that insured by a bond or some other mechanism, whether it be a certificate, a deposit, a bond, a letter of credit, however you do it, to ensure that there are funds established and in place to deal with the eventual situation of there not being screening. So, we could put together a list of all those various things. But it is all related to the city's legal authority, and it does have the legal authority to mitigate privacy impacts under this land use permitting process and requiring that that continues in the future, which is at the core of the permit approval. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good? All right. Norm?
And of course, that's a concern also, if we can't even enforce our conditions of approval for a matter of a few months, how are we going to do it over a period of, say, five or ten years?
That's, that's what I think Carol was just.
Exactly, in other words, I want to emphasize that if I understand correctly, I'm not advocating this right now, but the city could, would have the authority to go through a process to revoke the permit altogether.
That is also in the code.
It's also in the code, yeah. If we want, we chose to do that. I'm not advocating it right now, but I just want to point that out.
Yeah, and it's actually a legal violation to have violated conditions of approval. So, there are different options.
Yes.
I mean, what we're talking about right now, I mean, the reason this is in front of you is to see if this could be fixed by a landscape plan, right? I think our conversation is, well, this might not be enough, send it to the planning commission per the motion, and it might not just be the landscape plan that is tweaked. That's all okay. That is part of the, the permit process, because the conditions were violated, right? So, but you are correct, there are other adds, yes.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, the motion's been modified by Brian to include the wall, making sure that the wall gets done. Do I have a second or?
I mean, the other thing is, I don't, I, we probably don't want to even go there, but you can go higher than a six-foot wall too.
Again, that's why I'm saying, we send it back to the planning commission, and they can look at all the options that are in front of them if they choose to.
And maybe, you know, on the backside of where the crabs live, maybe you want to go higher than a six-foot wall. I don't know, but yeah, send it back to the planning commission.
Excuse me, members of the council, can I add something to that comment about the wall? I just want you all to bear in mind that if you install a masonry wall, six-foot-high, eight-foot-high, ten-foot-high, whatever you do there, all the existing plant materials, the trees that are there that still have roots, are going to be torn up. So, there's a very high chance that those trees may not survive. So, just bear that in mind, if we're talking about putting in a wall there, that's something I just want to put out here right now to the public, that there may be an additional work.
Those will all be factors, the planning commission.
That's fine, I just want to make sure it's said, stated before you guys.
Full public comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify one more thing? It's going to go to the planning commission for them to look at it and hopefully come up with a viable solution. But will it automatically come back to us for the final approval?
That's my understanding, yes, because we were the last body.
I want to clarify that, yes.
That's Todd's. Unless you defer your, kick it to the commission and let them make a decision to it, and then it would be appealable, or council have the ability to call off a review?
Well, so it's in front of you tonight, because like you said, Brian, you guys were the final one, so it has to come back to you. If you're sending it to the planning commission to make revisions for a new permit, unless you direct that it comes back to you, I mean, the planning commission is the, is the body of, of review, general of these types of things. It could be appealed by the council or by anybody else, but if you want it to come back, you should say it has to come back.
I would like to propose that be added to the.
To the motion?
To the motion, please.
That is to simplify things. You want it to come back?
Yes, once they make the recommendations come back for, because at this point, I feel we're absolutely responsible for what happened. Not that we caused it, but basically, it's our responsibility to solve this problem. Hopefully, the planning commission can do all the work on it, but basically, it's our responsibility.
Thank you.
Could I add to Greg's list of considerations of removal of the ADU? Just something for the planning commission to consider.
If they're, if, if the issue ends up being they're addressing fire code issues, then the ADU has to plan that, because that's what's closest to the crabs' PL. So, they'll, they're going to have to consider that.
I don't want to be prescriptive to the planning commission. I'd like them to, I mean, to me, the, the conditions that Greg put in place, coupled with the modification of, of privacy, I mean, I think that's, and if removal of the ADU is one of the options they put forward, so be it.
So be it.
Yeah. So, we have a motion that's been modified. Rafferty, do you have it? Do you want to read it back, or?
Good luck.
I was going to say, I don't, there's a couple of missing gaps in there, but thankfully, we are.
We're recorded?
We're recorded and live here.
I assume the requested modifications were okay with the maker in the second of the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do I have a second? Of sending it back to the planning commission with the modifications that Greg?
Should we do it in the form of a complete motion?
Sure, if you, that would help, I think that'll help staff out quite a bit if we would just go back through it.
Okay. Move that we direct the planning commission to reconsider the actions that have occurred in the interim since they last looked at the matter, and that we would like them specifically to consider that the trees have been removed and what remedy is best for that. That there is an adequate setback from that property line, that is a condition of further approval, water be restored, mature trees placed, irrigation be in place, and, and that the trees mature within a rational period of five, no more than five years. That all of the trees be planted prior to any construction of anything, including the ADU. That the trees be considered to be evergreen, and that the matter, once determined what the condition modifications will be, returned to the planet, to, to the city council for ratification.
Brian, you had a modification about a wall.
And to allow approval for that six-foot wall up to the, you know, further up the property line, because normally, it's a thirty-five-foot setback, right?
Correct.
That that could be, the planning commission can look at that if they want to extend that wall on the side.
Okay, all right.
I accept the addition to the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Because I'll second that.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And John's, yes. Okay. I think we were at administrative reports, so city manager report.
Sorry, let me flip back to the front here. Just that you had mentioned earlier, we had a wonderful dedication ceremony for the new fire engine, and a great thank you to Senator Archilotta for all of his work and cooperation and the ability to provide some funding for us to be able to obtain that one. I just wanted to thank the senator again for all of his dedication to the heights. And also, we are coming up to Veterans Day tomorrow, so just wanted to wish all of those, I know we have some veterans in the House today, happy Veterans Day, that's all.
All right, city attorney. We knew your development.
In the month of October, we issued eleven building permits. We took in two code enforcement complaints. We did not close any code enforcement cases. We took in, issued two stop work orders in the month of October and closed five unpermitted construction cases. We took in eight development applications and approved three projects in the month of October. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Chief Martin?
Yes, good evening, thank you. So, in the month of October, we had sixty-eight incidents, of which, three of them utilized the Lucas machine, so we're getting a good use out of that Lucas machine, yes. Other departments are.
How successful? I mean, do we have, do we?
I mean, if you
Did everybody?
Look at the data, the data is very relevant in that you have a machine, you have a device that provides a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the time. So, no, two people could start doing compressions and be exactly at the same depth and, and breadth and also repetition. There's, the AMA is declaring that it's a hundred compressions a minute. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, Carol and I were watching the demonstration, we were both like going, wow, that's fast.
It's fast.
So.
And they're saying that that, that the compressions are what's saving the life, because you are pushing the blood to the vital organs.
That's really impressive.
So, what's more impressive is that that machine works no matter where you are positioned. You can be on your side, you could be upside down, and that machine is still doing a hundred percent. As I addressed a little bit of the crowd when we had the demonstration, I told them that normally, when you had just the firefighters doing the compressions and resuscitation, before we could load them onto a gurney, we would have to stop momentarily that process. Now, we don't have to do that. So, it's very, very good. If, if you save one or two lives, then it's well worth to have had that machine. So, that said, we also had a lot of accidents. We're going to, it's just the nature of the beast on Hacienda. We're going to have that occurring quite frequently, and it's reassuring that now La Habra Heights has some very powerful extrication equipment that was demonstrated also. So, that was a great event.
Yes.
We had, like I said, we had three calls in your island. So, we are continuing to do service there. We, it's probably something we really have to look at, because we can, there really isn't anything north of Woodyard Boulevard that we cannot be there before the county gets there. Even, even if we go off of Macy. If fifty-nines is called in from coal, we're going to be there before they do. So, we're continuing to do what we do, providing the service to the community, and we're also providing service to our neighboring community in La Habra. I also attended a LAFKA Desert Conference where the emphasis was on mental health. Mental health is something that the fire department as a whole throughout the country is looking at for its members, because firefighters are subjected to incidents over and over and over again, and they're suffering from mental problems as a result of this. You cannot be subjected to that many incidents without some kind of impact. So, we are going to be having a group that's spearheaded by one of our own, Lieutenant Colford. He's going to bring it free of charge into the fire department. And it has to do with a process of how do you cope with all these incidents you're subjected to? We had ourselves a very impactful incident not that long ago on, on Hacienda, where two, one, one youth was, was pronounced dead, and the other one still in critical condition as a result of a traffic accident. Highlights from Saturday, still riding high. I want the people of La Habra Heights to know that we've created probably the most staffed department that I've seen in the ten, almost ten years that I've been here. And it's allowing us to be well-staffed, well-trained, and we have a department now that's able to deliver to almost any incident without outside help. We might get to a point with some substantial funding that we will be self-sustainable. We have use art component, we have the heavy equipment that we can utilize extricating any patient. With the Amatru tools, you have a state-of-the-art that most departments don't have. That is vital in that I could take that piece of equipment right from the engine and put it to work within seconds. The other system that we had was powered by hydraulics. So, we would have to take the hydraulic unit out, hook up the hose that extended to only fifty feet, and then turn it on, and it was time-consuming. We go to work now. If you're trapped in a vehicle, we can get you out within seconds. So, that makes a big difference. And, believe it or not, these battery-powered Amatru tools, the. And, believe it or not, these battery-powered Amato tools, the spreader, the jaws, and, and the other component has a use life of one hour. And after that one battery's done, we have backup batteries, we just throw another battery on. There should not be an incident where we're working for an hour, but we have the ability to use that equipment. So, like I said, we're doing that, you probably have seen that we have most, we have 67 firefighters now. I don't know if you can remember a time where you had that many firefighters here on any given day. It has been my goal to have that staffing model, which is gonna allow us to be very, very robust, using a word that Mayor Papisola likes. It's exciting times for us, as we ask for help, we are also looking for any possible avenue into funding. Since I've been appointed, I have asked for six grants. Two are pending, four were FEMA grants, which we know are at a standstill right now, we can't get that kind of money. But I want everybody to know that we're continuing the efforts. I just attended an El Camino Academy today, and I'll have two more next week, and we're constantly recruiting, constantly keeping that staff open, so we will hope for a bright future. And I want to thank everybody involved for Saturday also, your participation, and a shout-out to you, Greg, for your donation, we made it clear to everybody. And I'm just overwhelmed, I really am, in the support that the community, that everybody here has shown to this Fire Department. I know you're proud of us, and we will continue to shine for you. Thank you.
Chief, a couple of questions. So, earlier in October, there was a series of fires along Hacienda, or sorry, along Harbor, brush fires. Did we ever figure out a cause for those? It was like three separate fires, and then there was like a fire the day before?
I did contact, I was contacted by... Did I turn it off? Okay, sorry about that. I, I did look into that because there was a concern, and we had a homeless person that set that, those fires.
Yeah, and then, I'm really proud of the staffing. Are we gonna be able to staff any response, any mutual, not mutual aid, what do we call it? Strike teams this year?
We are, CalOES has now gone into a new model by which they are looking for more qualified, so we're, we're ratcheting up our qualifications to our members and make sure that they're certified. So, for every resource that goes out there, they want a certified brush captain. I say it that way so you can understand, but it's a red card that they have to have. So, they'll have a task book, and in that task book, they'll have checklist of things that they're signed off. They have to know what all the wildland operations are, the incident within an incident, all the standing orders. They're, they're gonna have to have the experience to take out a company. So, the captain will have to be red-carded, you're gonna have to have a qualified engineer and two qualified firefighters. And that's gonna go in a database that is gonna be, Downey's heading that up for us in the ICCS, and we're gonna give them names of all the certified people as we certify them. So presently, right now, we have about 22 that are certified. And now that we have the new engine, we have the ability to send not just one, but two engines out on a strike team deployment.
I know in the past, I remember that was a pretty significant revenue stream for the Fire Department, and, you know, can help with some of the cost implications there, so. Good, that's, that's, that's very positive, good to hear. Any other questions for the chief?
Did they arrest the homeless person, or?
The sheriffs did have custody of him, yes. And surprisingly enough, the Habitat Authority was the ones that called me and told me that the sheriffs had gotten him.
Thank you.
And he, they saw him and a couple of the people in the resident, right there, right at the top, right before you go over the hill on Harbor, was where they found him.
Thank you. Sheriff's report.
Good evening, City Council. We have two vehicle burglaries to report for the month of October, one vehicle grand theft, open vehicle, two petty thefts, and three traffic accidents. That's all I have for you. The above the hill where that arrest was made for the arsonist, that was in the jurisdiction of Walnut. That's Roland Heights, so he was walking.
Oh, got it, you said Walnut.
Yeah, because I researched it and I couldn't find it at our station, and I discovered it was...
He was already over the hill and Roland Heights, got it.
Alrighty, that's all I have.
Someone, someone had asked me, and I don't know if this is possible, I understand this is probably just a standard report that you do for us, but I noticed all of the addresses are, are removed. It looks like they've been edited.
Not all of them, there's some with addresses, some for privacy reasons, they don't put them on there.
There's, there's no way to put, leave, just to strike out the physical address and leave the street so people can see it?
I can ask the secretary what, that's the reason why they do that.
Yeah, because some, some folks have been asking me, I find it funny that the elder abuse one, which I would think would be something we'd want to not advertise, is the one, the only one that's not edited.
Uh-huh.
So, but, yeah, I, I, I don't know if the department has a policy about not...
Yeah, I can ask why that is, I have no, no answer for that.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, if we can get a street address, because people look at this and they're, they're saying, okay, is this something near me? And they, they just like to understand, you know, especially if there's like burglaries or something going on around them, they, they kind of want that awareness. So, I, I look at this as a positive way, it was that some citizen is actually going onto our website and looking at a, you know, a report that's buried in our council agenda, so.
Yeah, I've, I've never asked why.
Okay, well, if we could, I promised the person I would ask you tonight, so I can check off that box, thank you. Any other question for Deputy Beltran?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
On Saturday, we had a little session here going over to the Sheriff's Department and the needs and all those things. And during that time, a discussion came up about cameras, and that's another possibility of helping secure our city. And I guess I would like you to take a look at that and see what input you have on it. I know, I looked at it a little bit, and that one brand is a Flock system, and some of the cities around here have it, and Belvedere up north has it, and they use that in conjunction with, you know, the Sheriff's Department. It's, it's a layered approach, it's not a one-size-fits-all type thing. But it's, I guess, that's one thing I'd like for you to take a look at, so to know that we're in the discussion stage about that.
We had them, we had, well, I'm not sure if it was a Flock system, but we did have a system set up here a while back. It was up in Skyline and Hacienda Road. And a second one, the second camera, was West Road and Hacienda, I believe. And it always gave us information, oh, we got a stolen vehicle coming over the hill. And we usually waited for them at, on the other side, in Hacienda Heights.
Yeah, and that, we had that, and that's an old system.
That was a long time ago.
That was a long time ago, and I remember using that system. The Flock system works great, we use it a lot in the city, in the city of La Puente. They have several, but the issue they're having with now is that certain individuals are finding out that those cameras exist, so they're trying to avoid them, they're going around them, they're spray painting them, so they're not as secretive as they were once. But they work really well, and in, in the heat of the moment, we use them, and it gives us the, the direction a suspect is traveling, and we keep looking into the computer and it keeps tracking them, as long as they're going through the streets that have those, that system.
So that's a system that's already integrated with the Sheriff's Department?
That is correct.
So, Raf, can we look into that?
We did, yes, we can definitely look at the Flock. We had, when they first kind of hit the market, we had looked at it a little bit, but sheriffs were still working out retention aspect of the data, so it's like they've got that all worked out, so we can definitely inquire preferred system and bring that information back to you guys.
And there's other vendors too, that's just one that's out there that some of the neighborhood cities use here, and I know...
I just want to make sure it's something that's integrated with the Sheriff's Department, so we don't have to have a, you know, stand...
No, no, and it's, it's a license plate recognition, and you can also add the other feature to it, so it can identify the vehicles and the color and all those things. But anyway, that's all I wanted to talk about.
Good thing about our city, there's not a lot of ways to avoid the camera if you want to come into our city.
Very few entrances, thank you.
We can put them up high enough where they can't spray paint.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Deputy Beltran. Let's move into the consent calendar. Any... One want to pull any of the items?
I'll move approval items nine through 13 of the consent.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
John's yes. Alright, let's move into public hearing. Open the public hearing for item 14, I think.
This will be the adoption of the 2025 Building Code standards. At our meeting last month, we heard a presentation related to the building code changes and amendments for this next cycle, which will be known as the 2025 California Building Code. The city does this on a three-year basis as the state updates those codes, moving around through the segments. You said tonight is a public hearing for it. If you have any questions, our building officials here to answer them. Otherwise, like the request that the City Council conduct a public hearing, approve a second reading, accept the findings included in Exhibit A, and adopt ordinance number 2025-04, in ordinance of the city of La Habra Heights, California, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Codes and making necessary amendments to. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions for staff? Alright, I do have one card on this one. Stephen.
Stephen Blackensitron Road. Five years ago, when the ADU, JADU ordinance was being worked on, the city attorney recommended certain items go in the building and fire codes. It hasn't been done yet, we've been waiting, and we're suffering as a result. I sent you the attorney, the city attorney's letter with those recommendations. These should be added before you approve it tonight. One was setback. The state law for ADUs and JADUs has the four-foot setback from the side and rear property line. We don't use side and rear. So, this item setback means the distance from the inside boundary of the exclusive use area of a property, including the property line, the inside boundary of a public street, right-of-way, or private street easement. An ADU shall not be built on a slope easement, utility easement, a mapped natural hazard, a mapped restricted use area, or where the average slope of the building location exceeds 25%. An ADU shall be setback 25 feet from the edge of natural drainage course, a blue line stream, or 50 feet from the edge of a mapped presumed active earthquake fault. The minimum setback distance of any portion of any cut or fill or retaining wall from any property line, except for those required for access and right-of-way, is three times its visible height at that point, but not more than the applicable baseline setback. Grading. Construction of a proposed ADU or JADU subject to this section must not yield more than 100 cubic yards of fill plus cut in volume, nor may it yield more than five feet fill or cut in height. So, these were supposed to be included with the ADU ordinance, and so it's incomplete, and we suffer for it.
Question? We could make those, if those changes are acceptable, we could make them at a later date, is that correct? Just by amending our ADU ordinance? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the Adopt Ordinance 2025-04 as worded and articulated by Rafferty Wolfrich.
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg? Brian?
Ah, yes.
John's yes. Item 15.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item before you is adoption of the 2025 California Fire Code. As we just talked about with the building code requirements, this is also done on a three-year cycle. So, we need to adopt our new, updated 2025 California Fire Codes as part of this process. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, our building officials also here to be able to answer them. Otherwise, we recommend that City Council conduct a public hearing, approve a second reading, accept the findings as included in Exhibit A, and adopt ordinance number 2025-05, in ordinance of the City Council of the city of La Habra Heights, California, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Building and Fire Standards, making necessary amendments thereto.
Any, any questions for staff?
I think one of the things that's often overlooked here is the quality of the factual findings that are made in connection with items 14 and 15. I thought they were exceptionally well-done and very clear and very appropriate to the motions. With that said, I would, I would move the adoption of...
Hold on, I've got to, I've got to open the public, I got it.
Oh, got it, yeah, sorry.
I do have a, so, yeah, let me open the public hearing on that before we get a motion. Stephen, I think you're up on this too.
Thanks, Stephen Blackensitron Road. Here again, the changes were recommended by the previous city attorney pertaining to ADUs and JADUs, and they were recommended to go in the building and fire codes, not in the ADU code section, for reasons he had, which were good. Maybe our new city attorney has different reasons. It's good if they go in regardless, but the recommendation was to put them in those sections. The, this, you made some of these for the SB9 properties, and the same should apply to ADUs and JADUs. Street width greater than 20 feet, two means of egress on an approved fire road. ADUs, JADUs, and SB9 should also be required to prove minimum 1,500 gallons of fire flow due to the increased density, proximity to setbacks, neighbors, and other residential units on the property. Without these requirements, they are a danger to themselves, the neighbors, and the community. They should be added tonight. Then, the designating the city, the entire city, very high fire hazard severity. That puts burdens and penalizations on probably half the heights where it's not necessary. I mentioned the last time, Ontario has brush clearance requirements, even though they have no fire hazard zones. I don't know if you asked the city attorney since the last meeting, but you could ask if the city has authority to have brush clearance requirements if areas are not designated fire hazard zones. And here's one of the reasons why. AB 38, the recent law which requires inspections on houses for sale in high and very high zones. They have to show compliance with city fuel management and brush clearance. Example, the city requires you to clear your property within certain feet of neighboring structures. So, a sale could be held up because of what a neighbor does or doesn't do. Another example, and the inspector cuts a break to help someone out, then the new owner comes in and goes after the city for not enforcing the code. So it's a lose-lose for the city. And if you find out that you can have the same brush clearance requirements regardless of whether it's in a high, a very high, or no fire hazard zone, then there's no reason to designate the entire city the very high fire hazard severity zone. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want additional in the, uh, on page, uh, twelve, uh, five oh five point one, the address identification, the last paragraph. It talks about new and existing buildings shall be provided with approved address identification. And it talks about the size and the fact it could readily be observed as seen from the road. But it doesn't, uh, address two concerns raised in our general plan. Specifically, circulation element, uh, policy nineteen and twenty. Uh, the city shall review street naming systems to eliminate confusing duplications of street names on discontinuous streets. And policy twenty, the city should review house numbering systems to assure a logical progression of numbers along every street. And of course, the purpose for this would be to, uh, so that emergency vehicles, uh, can, can more readily access and find their way to the, uh, to the problem needing the, the attention. Uh, you might remember about three, I believe it was about three years ago, the, uh, perhaps a little longer, the, uh, Safeway Springs sent out a, uh, a fire truck and, uh, on, uh, a mutual aid call. And they were, were sent to us East Skyline. And they ended up going to the wrong East Skyline. Fortunately, there was somebody there was able to direct them to the proper Skyline and so forth, but this does, but this, uh, having the same name for discontinuous streets does create a problem and could actually result in a, uh, uh, less than, uh, it could result in essentially not a timely response from our outside, uh, mutual aid people. And of course, that'd be, and that would have, take some difficulty to address, that would be a problem, but the other one, why do we, why do we still from time to time approve changes in addresses that are not in numerical order? Because somebody thinks it's the, I'm not sure their lucky number or their birth date or whatever. It makes it more difficult for first responders to, uh, reach the, uh, get to the proper address. At the very least, I would like to see something, uh, see a requirement that in the future, all, all new numbering, the numbering system shall not be, uh, that addresses will not be placed out of order for future addresses. So if somebody wants to name their, uh, address after their birthday or whatever, and it's, and it's out of order numerically along the street, that should not be allowed. That'd be a simple item to enforce. And beyond that, that's all the other comments I have. I'd like to consider Steve Blagman's, uh, suggestions, but perhaps for a, on a different, uh, meeting, upcoming meeting.
Thank you, Norm. Rafferty, would it be, I mean, I've heard that a couple of times about the pros and cons. I've also heard the pros of having a single designation for the city. Including, uh, you know, the fact that most of what burned in El Tadina was not designated high fire. Um, so can we agendize for, you know, a future meeting, a discussion about work with Chief Martin? Let's develop, understand the pros and cons of possibly dividing the city from a.
High fire, non-high fire standards?
Right. I'd like to, I'd like to understand both sides of that coin because I've heard some people advocating for it. And I've heard people advocating against it. So, uh, I think we should just research the facts as they apply to us. And let's just have, you know, city attorney and fire chief present and let's understand and then let's make a conscientious decision one way or the other from this aspect. Any, any concerns with us doing that? All right, I'll go ahead and close the, go ahead and close the, uh, public comment and ask for motion. Greg, I think you were, you were providing one earlier.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five.
Uh, oh five or oh four?
Oh five. I think it's.
There's a typo in the staff report. We doubled the oh four, so it's oh five and it's in ordinance.
Got it. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Or, sorry, Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. So I think that closes public hearing items. We'll move to administrative items.
Next up is item number seventeen, which is review of the brush clearance non-compliance letter. Um, as we are moving into the, uh, new phase of our brush clearance program, we're in the process of transitioning from one company over to another software for their tracking, um, called three D I. Um, as part of that, so there's the opportunity to look at the language that is in the letters that go out today as part of the brush, brush clearance program. Um, there has been some thoughts or things about maybe that wording or the language in that letter might be a little too aggressive, um, for some, some residents or may strike an off-putting, uh, idea of it. So we wanted to have, council wanted to have a discussion of the language in our, our letters. So you should have a draft there of our existing letter that it is today. Um, and then I believe that Mayor Proten did provide a letter from another city. Um, the letter she provided is a code enforcement letter. Um, our code enforcement letters that go out are different than the brush clearance letters. Brush clearance uses a different letter and a template than we do for code enforcement. Code enforcement has a different process and a different letter that goes along with it. So it's recommended for council to review and discuss.
So would this also pertain to the lockbox issue? Which one are we using for locks? Are we considering lockboxes code enforcement or brush clearance?
This letter was for the lockbox.
Locks boxes are coming through the brush clearance side as part of their, the review and their inspections. They should be looking at those locks boxes.
So when we talk about the letter that I have, this is one from Villa Park.
Well, there's a letter from La Habra Heights.
There's a letter from La Habra Heights, which is, this is the current, right? This is what we get people today.
The lockbox, but I guess this is the brush clearance letter.
It's also the same letter that's, when you have a brush clearance violation or non-compliant, that's the letter that is sent.
What does our code compliance letter look like?
Our code compliance letter is completely different.
Oh.
Because it's two, two separate things that happen.
Well, if we're going to discuss this.
We, we run a different process with code enforcement than they do with brush clearance.
So can I just ask a question? The, the issue, if I remember correctly, Carol, the issue we have with this letter is that we're basically telling people that you failed your first inspection, you owe us two hundred and twenty-five dollars. We think that's a little harsh.
I, I think we're a small community and for people that haven't been in trouble, yeah, to get this, I think it's a little harsh. Now.
And the, the letter in front of me says from Villa Park, it says failure. So their, their, their remedy, so this remedy here is you owe us two twenty-five payout. Villa Park says failure on your part to meet this will cause the City of Villa Park to issue you in the amount of one hundred dollars for the first violation, two hundred for the second violation, and five hundred for each and every day this violation continues. Is that the proposed language that we want to substitute the two twenty-five with?
Well, not necessarily. I was just, and this is a twenty twenty-three letter, so maybe their fines have gone up, but it just seems to me we should. I'm not sure how you do this. It, it doesn't seem like it should be an open council.
I mean, you're comparing apples and oranges here because the Villa Park is a code compliance and Rafferty says there's a different letter for that.
Well, but this, to me, this is still too harsh for somebody that's never been in trouble and they get a letter and say, yo, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So should we form a subcommittee to rewrite this letter and have? I, so let me, I mean, I'll put my position up there. I, I agree with you. I, I would be pretty upset if, especially if I didn't realize I was violating a code and I get a letter like this and it's like, you owe me two twenty-five. And I know that when people come in, Rafferty, we use common sense and staff is usually pretty flexible, but as a resident, I'd be pretty pissed if I got, this is my first contact with the city ever. Right? And I gotta believe that some people, this is probably the first time they've ever heard from us as a city. So I, I don't know, council, I just, so that if, when we do form the subcommittee, we kind of give them a little bit of guidance about, are we all comfortable with saying like, hey, make the letter, letter a little softer, come up with some language that says you're violating this code, give them thirty days to come into compliance, reach out to, reach out to the city, let them know you fixed it. And if you don't fix it within thirty days, then we can come up with some language. Is that kind of?
That's where I'm coming from, but then I, I don't know the legality of the frequent flyers that are always violating. They shouldn't get.
I, I think this is.
That's brush clearance, right?
I think this is a good letter for first, you know, for a first violation. If, if it's someone that has every year has a problem with brush clearance, I have a problem with this letter, that letter going to someone that's a frequent flyer on brush clearance.
Right. Can we do that? Can we send?
So, so, I mean, I would think you could because if someone has priors, right, you have a different sentencing guideline for someone with priors than someone that doesn't necessarily have a prior violation, right? Like DUI and.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we talked about this. I mean, theoretically, yeah, you, you could. Um, if there was a history of compliance, I don't know administratively how much of a pain that is.
Yeah, that would be another thing. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot from a, do we track all this stuff? I mean, and how easy is it for the fire marshal when he's out in the field to know what letter to leave?
You also, it does make it more difficult, yes. And you also got to think about, we have seasonal employees that help with brush clearance, so they're not going to have the year-over-year knowledge of properties as well.
So I think it's getting a, getting a, a subcommittee together with, with Chief Jorgensen, sit down and.
We have, in the past, when brush clearance program adjusted and we went to the sort of the model we have today, um, there were a series of letters. There was a courtesy notice, a first notice, a second notice, pre-abatement, and then abatement notice that went along with it. Um, over time, that has been adjusted because we found that the majority of time, courtesy notice, the first notice, we didn't, weren't gaining compliance. There was definitely that pressure to get compliance and have people actually do their brush clearance and make sure we're out there doing it. People are doing the work ahead of time and making sure they're in compliance. So that letter has morphed over the years through the, through the fire marshals that we have had. Um, so now is the time, if we want to go back to a courtesy notice and a first notice, a second notice and that.
I want to be clear. I mean, I think we give someone thirty days and if you don't get it done in thirty days, here's your, you know, you don't get a pass jail, you don't get a pass go, you go to jail and pay us two hundred dollars.
Okay.
So.
I could live, I could live with that. It was just the idea you get a letter.
Let me make this a suggestion. You and Carol be on the subcommittee and come up with language.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
So.
Need a second.
Second.
Greg, Greg's jumping out a second there.
Well, I'll second that, yes.
Do I have to abstain? Norm?
Well, just, just as a further comment before, yes, essentially, I just, one of my concerns is since we have, uh, uh, interns that, that might have, one or two interns are new every year or two. Uh, there's also a problem with the intern understanding precisely how they're applied to in the individual cases because after all, our, our properties and our lots and our home designs are, are individual. And I think of the one example where, uh, sometimes a property line isn't even exactly known by the two neighbors. Ran a situation like that with my next-door neighbor, kind of embarrassing, but uh, there's a volunteer palm tree that kept on growing and growing. And I said, gosh, if my neighbor wants to have a palm tree there, it's up, up to her, but I think it's kind of dumb. Well, I forgot about thirty-some-odd feet, uh, one of us got cited for it. And turns out she didn't want it either. She was just trying to be nice to me, not telling me that's kind of dumb, nor not grow that palm tree there. So in essence, we had this thirty, thirty-foot palm tree. So we looked at each other, we got to get this thing down, taking care of which we eventually did, of course, quickly, but we, uh, it's one of those types of things that can occur in La Habra Heights. So in essence, the emphasis ought to be on, uh, the very fact that we have, uh, interns who might be new every year or two. And secondly, because the neighbors may not be aware of their property line. And that's actually kind of common. Uh, just two thoughts, but then as, as far as the vote goes, I'll go, oh, yes, go ahead and have, have the committee.
So, Norm?
That's a yes.
Carol? Yes.
That's the longest yes I've ever heard.
It could have been worse. It could have been a no, but.
I don't know that I would be upset with that, Norm. Greg? Yes, no, on the subcommittee? No, we need a vote. No, we need a vote. Yes or no? On this.
I'm having hearing problems tonight.
No, no, no worries. So a, a vote on the, uh, subcommittee to go off and rewrite the letter, Carol and I?
Yes, the two of you, yes.
Okay, all right.
And yes.
Yay.
Okay, um, item eighteen.
I think, Mayor, the item before you tonight is an update to our Form one thirty. Um, so this is a attachment here. You see the attachment to you. This is for Cal OES. Um, this shows who has the ability to sign off on official forms of paperwork for OES and for the state. Um, so we are in the process of doing that right now with FEMA and Cal OES related to our storms. Um, and as we went through that process, we had updated it previously. So previously, it said interim city manager, finance manager, and fire chief. Um, so since we have a different assembly of titles today, um, we need to update that to city manager, assistant city manager, and fire chief. That way, there are three of us that are, have the ability to, um, sign those forms and sign off on everything from Cal OES and/or FEMA. All right, so it's recommended for the city council to adopt the State of California Governor's Office of Emergency Services designation of applicants, agent resolution. Cal OES Form one thirty, designating the city manager, assistant city manager, fire chief as authorized agents to execute applications on behalf of the City of La Habra Heights for the purposes of obtaining post-disaster public assistance grants from Cal OES and FEMA. Um, so that would be resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-nine, a resolution of the city council, the City of La Habra Heights, California, approving the designation of applicant's agents resolution for non-state agencies and designating the city manager, assistant city manager, and fire chief as authorized agents. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Donce yes. All right, item nineteen, overview of our workshop.
We had a workshop on Saturday related to law enforcement services. Um, and had another good discussion with the, uh, community and council about law enforcement services and and other things out there and ways we could look at it. Um, so it was a, a very good, robust discussion and it's like another one in our series of strategic plans where we go through and look at, um, how the city spends our monies that we receive. Um, and try to do it as the wisest possible way, um, looking at those priorities to those things. This is another one of those steps. We will have another one coming up in January related to administration, so like city, city functions. And then in February, a capstone meeting to kind of cover all of, all of the topics and look at setting some goals for us. As far as how we. and look at setting some goals for us as far as how we budget and setting a period of goals over probably five years that we can, we could try to achieve for all the various departments and things. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
I think the most telling thing from the workshop was just the fact that even at $800,000 a year, we're still way under what a comparable city running their own police department with backstop by the sheriff's office would be. So in terms of using the money wisely, we can probably save a few bucks, but we probably can never do better than we're doing today. And I think, but the most important part is just that there is no ability to increase the general fund contributions. And I think that Rafferty's work in looking at local cities that are roughly of our size and the kind of, the cost it makes, it costs for them to provide police support, the discussion about City of Whittier and what they charge the City of Santa Fe Springs, were all very relevant to the fact that we, we're doing, we're doing fine except we can't afford it. So...
But, yeah, and I agree. The one, one tech away, Rafferty, maybe it's you and myself and one of the lieutenants. Let's get together and let's have a conversation about, is there an opportunity to split a traffic car between us and another city so that we're more diligent with those extra 30 hours a week? Like I said, I, I'm worried that if we're not prescriptive about those minutes, those hours, that they get filled with stuff that really doesn't have the same value as a dedicated 20-hour-a-week traffic car would have. I, I don't know how, I don't know how feasible that is, but if we're not chewing, and maybe we need to look over, you know, like a couple-year trend to see how often we chew into those, you know, those extra 20 hours a week. My, my guess is very rarely are we chewing into those extra 20 hours a week with calls into the city. I look at the call logs and I don't see, I'm not seeing 30 hours here. So I'd like to, to, to work on that with the sheriff's department, see if we can get some extra traffic enforcement up in the city for those extra 20 hours. Then we have 10, then we have 10 hours a week for everything else. And we can always true up towards the end of the year, right? My guess is they probably wouldn't be able to do that every week, but maybe it's like every other week we can get 20 hours of traffic car. Maybe there's some other contract cities around that can't afford, you know, don't have the budget for a full traffic car and we can figure out how to split it. And again, it doesn't mean that that traffic car is here 20 hours each week. It could be one week they're in one city and one week they're up here. So...
No, I think that's good. I mean, those hours should be managed by us rather than at the whim of the sheriff's department.
Like, like I said, I, I've seen how it gets managed sometimes. I'm not saying that's the way industry does it, but, you know, there was a, there's a small city up in the foothills that looks a lot like La Habra Heights, a little bit more wealthy than us. And I, I always remember as a young deputy going in saying, you're, you're in that city because we need more minutes in that city, go drive around. And it wasn't, you know, I never worked there. I didn't know what to do or, you know, I had no, no orders. It was just go drive around and log time in that city so that we, we get to count those minutes. So I'm, I'm concerned that that's what happens here and would like to see better use of that time. So you'll, you'll take it.
Yeah, we'll make some arrangements with our lieutenants and captain.
Take a look, take a look at our existing contract though, John, so you thoroughly understand that.
Yep. Yep. All right. Any other discussion on that? Again, Rafferty, so I know we've been, I'm just going to move into item 20 here and, and talk about individual council member information. But, Rafferty, I do want to, we've been asking a lot of staff, especially like on Saturdays. We've had a lot of workshops. We've had other city events on Saturdays. So I think like in October, I think we chewed up just about every Saturday of staff's time between trash, trash day and workshops and other activities. Thank staff so much for that. I know someone asked me, do we let staff adjust? My expectation is we are letting staff adjust for when they're here on a, on a Saturday that they're getting some, getting some time off somewhere else to compensate for them being here on a Saturday.
That, they also like, obviously myself and Angie and Chief were salaries. We don't get paid for it, but the other staff members do get a little bit over, to overtime for being able to be here. If they need to adjust, we'll, we work with them to, to do that one. Yeah, we, we...
Again, we talked about, we talked about mental health and making sure we have some downtime that you and Angie and the chief are making sure that you're adjusting your time and staying healthy and...
My wife booked me a doctor's appointment, so that's a...
We, we need you healthy, Rafferty, so please look at the holidays, you know, look at when there's time for you and me to take some time off. So thank you. Again, that was, I guess, a real perverse way of saying thank you, but thank you for, you know, the last couple of months. I know we've asked a lot of staff to make the workshops happen, the dedication ceremonies, the trash days, the, the other things that we're doing on the weekends, so thank you.
I just want to make a comment that I thought that Saturday, all of you guys really did a fabulous job out there and Chief Martin and stuff. It was, it was really good and they, it's really impressive, you know, with the jaws of life and stuff and working on the cars out there and it was really a nice event. So I can tell every, you know, you could just tell you put your hearts into the whole presentation, so it was nice. Thank you.
Any other items? Any meetings anyone went to? So meeting Rafferty and I are going to on this month, mid-month, a cyber exercise that Edison is putting on, so... Oh, and Chief Martin is also going. Okay, all right, good. Oh, and, oh, great, okay. So I, I will be there in a, in a dual-function role, but I, I reminded the, the people putting it on that I will predominantly be the mayor of La Habra Heights. So it's, we'll have something to report back in the December meeting, but it's really looking at cybersecurity and how entities should respond to cyber events and how to develop a response plan and response planning around cyber, cyber events. We don't have a huge, huge footprint in that space, but, you know, it is important that we remain vigilant. A city's reputation can be irreparably harmed by just one, one bad event. All right, anything else on 20? Everybody looks like they're done. So item 21, public comments, not on the agenda. Anybody have anything? All right, I'll adjourn. Thank you.